I just want to go over a couple of items that we're going to be sharing with some of the prospective council people, Zandor Mayor. And the first item is to determine the financial and capital planning option with proposed closing of the TID number four. And then the second one we'll be sharing is the review proposed capital projects and possible future bonding and debt structure issues and other issues for the 2008-2009 consideration, i.e. the police department building, the municipal building, if the library moves, lower level of City Hall, San Cro EMS, expansion of the fire hall or satellite facility, and proposed increase in the EMS funding. So you can see we're leaving you with a lot of work to do. And with that, I'll turn it over to Betty, who's going to introduce Sean.
As an extension of our past meeting that we had requiring talking about the closure of the debt, part of the discussion is how is this going to affect our debt in the future? How is it going to affect the mill rate in the future? And so, in order to expand upon that a little bit more, we've got Sean Lentz from Ellers and Associates here again to give us a little bit more information, a little bit more in depth, and maybe we can kind of come to a consensus on how the council, the present council and the new council will probably look at moving forward on this. So, Sean.
Okay. Betty handed around a PowerPoint that I'll be going through, and please, as just with the last meeting, stop me with any questions as we go along. I apologize, I probably should have thought about this and made the cover a little bit different than the last meeting, because if you brought the last one, it's going to be real similar in terms of the cover. But as Betty said, we have the opportunity that is presented to us in the closing of tax increment district number four, to really look at how do we want us to see going forward the mill rate, overall mill rate tax situation for the city be directed, as well as looking at the projects that are on your front burner, or will be through some discussion process, maybe some prioritization of what you want to see done and what needs to be accomplished, how that can fit in with a financial plan, again tying it back to the tax rate. Now, the other obstacle, and this is on the second page, and this is where I wanted to start, this is really just a quick review. As you recall from the last meeting I was at, the newest levy limits do permit the city, to some extent, to increase your levy based on the closing of a tax increment district. The first set of levy limit rules did not have this. After a lot of discussions at the state level, they said, you know what, communities have used tax increment districts in this way before, we should open this avenue again. And what they decided on is that when you close a district, you're able to take advantage of 50% of that closure in terms of your ability to raise your levy in the next year. So they didn't say you could have the entire capacity for operational needs, and I should clarify that this is, debt is outside of this in a different category, but for operational needs, they said you can use 50% of the value of the TIF in the year that it was terminated. So in the box on page two, what does the 50% mean for Hudson? The 50% is 95 million approximately. We take the 95 million and divide it by the valuation of the city, 1.5 billion, that's about just over 6%. So what we're looking at going into levy '08 for collect '09 is the ability to increase your levy probably 6% based on the closing of the TIF, and then potentially another 2% on top of that under the state levy limit rules where you're allowed. This year it was 3.86%, next year it's 2%. So I think we'd have to see where the final numbers come in, in terms of that, will you be the 2% or net new construction? But around 8% is probably going to be the maximum amount for operational and the debt areas of your budget that you would be able to adjust your levy for the next year budget. Okay? Any questions on that?
You're good.
All right. And then, real briefly, pages three and four, I had this in the presentation that we made last month. This is just an idea of looking where the total levy of the city has been from 2001 through the current year 2008. We also looked at it on page four, from the standpoint of a mill rate, and you can see that from 2001 through 2007, there had been a gradual decline in the mill rate. Really, that means that the equalized value, from my standpoint, the equalized value of the city has out, the growth, has outpaced increases in your budget. And the budget being all elements, operation, capital, and debt. In 2008, there was a small increase from 2007 levels, from that 4.07 to 4.18. That is the current mill rate for the city right now. This page number five was, and again, this is just for background purposes, before we look at a couple of different scenarios. Again, this chart was in the previous presentation, and what this chart shows is the 8.08% increase, and taking that for operational needs in the next budget upcoming. What would happen using that 8% number is your levy would go from about 5.7 million to around 6.1 million. And this has no new debt in it, this is just operations alone. Making that change and closing the district, on the right side of the page, is an estimate of where the mill rate would go. So the mill rate would go from 4.18 to 3.74. So just to reiterate that again, we'd add about 350,000, approximately somewhere in that range, of new costs, or new budgeted costs in the operational area, go from 5.7 to 6.1, and that would be allowable under the levy limits. But our mill rate, because we'd be closing the TIF and adding that 190 million, 195 million, 190 million in value, back to the general fund tax levy capacity, would drop from 4.18 to 3.74. Okay?
What is, let me get right here. So, the difference between 3.74 and 4.18 is $720,000, is that what that says?
Correct. Yeah, that, thank you for reminding. That note in the upper right corner is after this increase, if the council made the 8% increase as a part of your budget, then, under the levy limit rules, what other things would be available to you, what other options would be available to you if you wanted to stay at the 4.18 level that you're currently at? There's really only one, and that's having a debt levy that would add about 720,000.
A debt levy?
Yep.
Question. Is it realistic to think that our equalized value is going to go up by 4.3%?
Yeah, that is actually, a slide coming up. Our projections right now, what we've done at this point, and this is certainly a variable that we could change, is we looked at the last six years' growth in the city, and took the average of that and then discounted it 50%.
Okay.
But, that is 4%. And I have talked with Betty about this, and we're thinking, you know, given the economy, given the environment, maybe we should go, maybe we should discount it another 25%. So we're only looking at 25% of that average. But we started with this number.
Okay.
So Sean, in summary, the reality is, as we keep the mill rate the same, the operational levy will increase $720,000.
No, I'll-
You can.
We can, we can go about 350,000, and this is on the left side of the page, for operational purposes. That's the change from 5.7 million to 6.1.
6.1.
Right, but that'll leave the, that'll decrease the mill rate down to 3.74.
That's right.
Or we can leave the mill rate the same, and the operational levy could increase up to 720,000.
No, the operational levy is limited to that-
Expenses, I mean.
The only expense that we can increase is debt.
Okay.
The principal and interest on debt.
Correct. Principal and interest on debt. And again, that's all due to the levy limit rules. The 8% increase is the 5.7 million to 6.1.
Okay.
That we can use for operational purposes.
The debt levy can be increased 720,000.
That's right.
Okay.
Yep.
If we leave the mill rate the same.
Correct.
Okay, that's, I was just using the wrong terminology.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, page, any other questions on that? Page six, then, this again is, was similar to the last discussion we had, and I only put it in here again to note, what we talked about looking at with the council at the last meeting was options two and three, and how that might logistically be done going forward. Option two being closing the TID and maintaining the mill rate at the 4.18 level, and option B, three, excuse me, being closing the TID and having the mill rate drop, not all the way down to 3.74, but at some number that we would feel comfortable with going forward. Okay? And those two options are really what we're going to look at then, over the next couple of slides.
And either one of those options, we still have $350,000 with additional operating income.
That's right. Yep, that's, we're making, in the next, next set of slides, we've made the assumption that the council does make that choice, that you feel the increase, the 8% increase, the 350, is warranted, we make that choice. Then everything we do is on top of that. Again, that's option one, where you could even consider, where do we want to be including that element, that operational element? Okay, and, real briefly, page seven is to the point that was made on the valuation increase, that we've looked at it using the last six years' average, discounted it 50%, and that's projecting, it really starts at about 4% and then staggers down to about 3% over the next 10 years. And we can certainly revisit that, and we'll probably revisit that and see if maybe that number should go down. Okay. Well, let me take you to page eight. With Betty's assistance, what we've done is, we've looked at a couple of different scenarios. And this first scenario is directed toward option two from a couple pages ago, and we've got two approaches dealing with option two, so 2A and 2B. 2A says that we are going to target 4.18 as our equalized mill rate into the future. So we make that decision, and our variable really is debt, because, again, we're limited on the operational side to the state levy limits. And just one last point on that, the levy limits are for this next budget year, and we really don't know what the rules will be after that. So they'll be arguing about that again in the fall, I imagine, or two falls out, they'll be arguing about that again. So what we've done is, in this first page eight, is we've done a million six in borrowing for capital projects that I think you've discussed to date, more your annual projects include streets and some other elements in there. A million six, 10-year amortization, and we've also included a $5 million borrowing that is more targeted toward facilities, and the mayor listed what potentially some of those facilities could be when he talked about the agenda. That is in red. Then in yellow on this chart, we also see ongoing borrowings from 2009 to '12 of approximately 2 million to handle similar type projects as is being handled in the 1.6 million for this year. And that's just based on some projections of what the needs will be of the city going forward. And again, those numbers can certainly be adjusted. What you'll see then in the repayment schedule for that debt is we would see an increase in the levy for debt, and we would see an increase in the mill rate for debt, based on this structure over time. It jumps up to about 2.8 million, and the mill rate goes from about 1 mil for debt up to about 1 and 1/2, 1.7. Okay? And then it falls out gradually over time. Now, really, we need to look at this slide then in context with the next couple of slides. So, this would be the debt projections-
Sean, may I ask a question on page-
Absolutely.
Number eight. You have in parentheses at the end of the header, 2 million from 2009 to 2012. I'm assuming that that is not 2 million per year in additional debt, because that is not reflected in the graph that you have. Ordinarily, we would be talking about around 2 million a year, but that is not reflected in this graph.
No, and I think, I think I should clarify that. It is 2 million a year in debt issued. What you see on the graph is the annual principal and interest payments to pay back 2 million over 10 years.
Okay.
So that, and, actually, I should have clarified that better, because I could see-
Well, it just doesn't, it said 2 million from 2009 and 2012, and I assumed that was 2 million per year, but it wasn't, it didn't say that.
Correct. It is 2 million issued each year and paid back over 10 years.
Thank you.
So this says that today our debt service, we pay almost 1.5 million per year in debt service, is that correct?
Yeah, you're looking at the blue line there for 2008, yes.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, now, keep this in the back of your mind for the next two slides, so you just see how we'll pull this together. Slide 2A, total levy then, is a projection using the assumptions from the previous page, and then combining the operational levy with this new projected debt levy. And what you see is that in 2008 to 2009, we would go from about 5.7 to 6.8 million, and that's the actual dollar levy. And then, over the next four years, 2009 to 2012, it gradually goes up to 7.6 million in total levy. One thing to look at, in orange on this sheet, is the operational levy. And what you'll see there, that that part of the bar is really not increasing at all. It's going up about 95,000 a year after 2008 to 2009. 2008 to 2009 is about 350, but then only 95 a year. That's with the assumption that the state continues the 2% levy limits. The increase, the larger chunk then, is debt. So the debt then is increasing, that's really what's driving that increase in the total levy.
Sean, where you have the maroon, I think it's a maroon color, listed as capital, I'm assuming that is capital reserves?
No, actually, it was-
Because it does not exist after this year on this chart.
Right. What that represents is, back in 2007 and previous to that, and Betty, if I misspeak, please correct me, what the city had in your annual budget is some component of cash, a cash levy for capital needs each year. With the levy limits, that's been pretty much evaporated. That's not a part of your budget anymore. And the way that that's been handled is, we've done one-year notes for approximately the same amount, and moved it to a debt levy component dealing with levy limits.
Got you, thank you.
Okay, then, taking this chart then to 2A, this brings everything together in terms of the mill rate that we talked about. Again, with the idea of targeting 4.18, you'll see that that's achieved with this approach. Again, what you'll notice, though, is go from 2009 to 2012, the purple or bluish color is your operating levy, mill rate for that. That goes from, really, from 3.19 down to 2.7, and the debt goes from .99, or 1 mil right now, to 1.45. Now, I think one of the realities of all this is, if the levy limits continue, could we do facility financing and stay approximately at 4.18? Looks like we can. But can we afford to pay for the operational component of having new facilities when we're limited to 2% increases each year? I think that's, that's more of a challenge.
That was your assumption, 2%?
That-
Operating.
Correct. And maybe just to expand that a little bit, a couple of things could change that. This is saying that, basically, the slowdown continues and the 2% is where you're at, and that's it. It also is assuming that the state continues the levy limits at that 2% level. And that seems to have been where their target has been in the past.
So you build a building, but you can't maintain it.
You may have some challenges there, absolutely. Yep.
So, at the, but this is all based on raising $5 million in capital, so you're saying that's the max you could raise with this scenario?
I don't know that I'd say it's the max, it, because there are options for the way you structure the debt that could increase the amount, but I think this is a good cut at viewing it in the context of how the city has managed their debt in the past. The city is generally, for your annual financings, a million six or 2 million. We've structured that debt and tried to pay it back in 10 years in full. For a facility project, maybe it makes sense to go 20 years, and it does do that in this, this plan.
So then by 2012, I'm looking at the wrong chart here, what is our debt-equity ratio? I mean, as far as, sorry, in this case, it would be valuation versus debt, right?
Yes. Yeah. You're, I think, I don't have the percentages here, but you can see that your percentage of your levy for debt is growing each year. It's getting larger and larger. There's no question about that. From the standpoint of some of the other measuring sticks that we'd look at, the city's borrowing capacity wouldn't be challenged with this plan, because you have used it very conservatively, you're not, you're not near the 5% of your valuation that the state limits you to. There wouldn't be any problem there. I think the biggest challenge is that you've, you've started to discuss some facilities, you've got an opportunity to potentially do those and finance those within the mill rate environment that you're currently in, but the operating side, if the state doesn't give you any flexibility, and you don't grow to allow you to use more than 2% increases each year, could be a problem in the future.
Right.
Okay, really briefly, we did do option B, and then, and then we'll look at option three as well. Option 2B, really the only change here, and as Betty and I talked about this, what we wanted to highlight is that it may be difficult to come to a conclusion within this calendar year on the which facilities you think you're going to do, what the actual project's going to be, where it's going to be located. And if the council felt like we need to, we're going to need more time to make that decision, i.e. we're not going to issue debt in 2008 for a facility, it's going to be 2009. But, at the same time, we don't want to have that large drop in the mill rate and then have to go right back up. So we want to be at 4.18 or something on those lines. One of the strategies that we talked about in dealing with that is, and it really shows up here on page 11, what you'll see is there's no debt in, or there's a much larger 2009 payment, this is in red, for debt that we issue in 2008. So we really, what we do is, instead of maturing maybe 100,000 or 150,000 for next year, we mature 500,000 or 600,000 in principle. What that does is, we would still be able to achieve that goal of staying at 4.18, having the debt levy get us there, but we're not going to rush to figure out the facility decision and give us more time, so we can-
What's the, would we be paying off notes at a higher percentage rate than we could get them next year? Are we paying off 12% notes next year, we can get 2% notes? I'm wondering if there's a value in that long-term wise.
Yeah, and there's, actually, there's two elements to it. One would be, we would do a new issue and actually accelerate that payment on that issue for next year. The other option is, I think you have one loan that has a balloon payment, because there was a feeling you might get some state money for that, which doesn't appear to be the case. We may try to buy down that balloon payment with this levy. That would be the other way of handling it. So there's a couple of different strategies that we could use. To your question, interest rates and analysis, what's the best way to go would be one of the things we'd look at before making the decision. What I wanted to get across with here is that, I think originally we were worried that if we don't make decisions on some of these facilities, we're going to lose this opportunity to stay flat.
Right.
I think there's some things we can do with your current 1.6 million dollar issue or your existing debt that will get us to the same place and allow you to have a little more time to make those decisions.
Sean, last year we had about $150,000 that the state took away from us, because we kind of had it laying there, and the governor said, "We're going to go to 3.86, but we're taking that 150,000 away from you." Now, is that the same type of situation that could occur if we, if we, if we had that much debt money, and they come in and say, "Well, everybody who has a surplus of money, we're going to lower your particular increase in percentage."
I think what's factored in here is basically an even situation for state aids that you receive. So if there is, and I'm putting that 150 in that category, if you were to see another reduction in that area, that, that could be a problem. And that would be, you know, you get the 350 increase on the one hand, but you're losing other revenues, that's not factored in here. If that's going to happen again-
I know, but they're getting kind of tricky in Madison, is my point.
Yeah. If that was going to happen again, we'd certainly, probably want to reduce that 350 down to 200 or something in terms of the projections, because that's going to be the net effect.
Well, that was one of my concerns.
Okay, I think we can skip 12 and 13, because again, that's very similar to 2A. Really, the difference is that idea that we can structure the debt this year to allow more time and still maintain that 4.18, if that's where the council wanted to end up. Okay? Option three then is approaching things a little differently in saying that we are at 4.18 for our mill rate currently, but with the closing of the TIF, we would like to reduce that down to a lower level. I picked arbitrarily four mils as just a number to run this analysis at and see what the council's reaction was to it. But you would have certainly the option to be anywhere in between the 4.18 down to the 3.74 that we talked about if we did no additional debt, and we just did the operational increase allowed by the levy limits.
But you're suggesting that so that we don't get in a yo-yo situation in-
Right.
Years after that.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. So with this option, option three, page 14, we're still doing the financing as we talked about before, 1.6 million this year, and then a $5 million issue as well, and then 2 million in new financing paid back over 10 years, each $2 million issue paid back over 10 years for 2009 through 2012. So that hasn't changed, that component is still here. If you go to page 15, what you'll see if we target four mils instead of 4.18 mils, the total levy then is lowered, obviously, because we're not going to go up to that 4.18. Our total levy is going to be less, and it really, it's all in the debt section. We are, we're having a lower debt levy because of this and with this sort of a structure.
I'm sorry, I missed something, because if we're still raising 5 million and we're still doing 2 million per year, how does our debt change?
It's really that we're structuring the debt differently.
Yeah.
So, what, what happens is, if you make the decision to target a lower mill rate from where we're at currently-
So you're going to go in longer payments or stretch it out over a longer period of time?
It really isn't a longer period of time, but it is pushing it back. We're still paying off the annual 10-year notes in 10 years, and we pay back the 5 million facility in 20. Excuse me, but rather than paying it back on a very more accelerated basis, we are extending it over a longer period of time. Really, a very simple way of looking at this is that the one offshoot to keeping the mill rate lower, if you feel you still have to do all the same projects, is you pay more interest on your debt.
Right.
That's really what it comes down to.
Yeah.
So, and I think that shows up a little bit on page 16, in that we target a four-mil levy going forward, and the debt levy component that, instead of increasing to get us to that 4.18, is at the lower level. But since we're still, in these scenarios, doing all the same projects, it's really just pushing out that debt, and it's getting paid back a little bit later. That's really what's happening. So you're paying more total interest.
More interest, right.
And the taxpayers will see a little relief, but it isn't going to be a-
Well, it sounds like it's, it's a little relief, but they're going to pay it a lot longer. So, in the longer-
Yeah, but you give them the candy bar and then take it away in one year, then you got kind of, kind of a problem too. Meaning if you lower the, the mill rate drastically in one year, that's the candy bar, and if you take it away the next year, you're going to get a lot of people complaining. I like the cushioning effect, but, you know, council's got to make that decision.
Well, and with that thought in mind, really, just a summary of a couple of the decisions going forward. First is, and most importantly, the tax increment district, in order to have the impact be next year, and I think we talked about this the last meeting, that decision on closing the district notifying the state has to be made before May 15th. I think, actually, option 2A and 2B, and option three, through the questions that you've asked me, we've touched on all of these bullet points. A couple of things, those facilities, oh, go ahead, Mayor.
Well, Sean, I think, I think maybe we had to open it up to the potential council people, people and mayor, if they have any questions so far. Are you with us? Do you understand what direction we're going, the options that we've talked about? Okay. Any questions? So far? Okay, continue. So far. Okay, continue.
Well, and this will just be a summary. The, the 5 million and the 2 million a year, the borrowings paid back over 20 years on the 5 million, 10 years on the 2 million issues, those are projections. They certainly could change and they probably will change particularly when you look at some of the facility solutions and options that'll come before you. But I think this at least gets us started in, in some of the flexibility and some of the ways we can approach this over the next year or so. The, the process, I think, the difference between 2A and 2B again is there is a solution that if we target a 4.18 or a four-mill, something, whatever we end up targeting, whatever that's, that decision is, there's a way to deal with this year's debt and not require you to absolutely have to make decisions on these facilities within the next nine months. So I think, I think through this process, we've determined there's some other solutions that we can achieve both, both objectives. Secondly, the third bullet down on option three, I think there is the ability, if, if the council, potential new members as well, if you want to do some relief, we'll call it, from the 4.18 to another level below that, there is the ability to do that and still finance a lot of these projects that we have. The trade-off is though, that you're going to pay more in interest probably by, by structuring the debt a little bit and pushing out the payments a little bit to be able to, to fit that in, to that objective of lowering the mill rate. And lastly, the, the final bullet point, we've touched on this, but if we stay at that 2% level, just to reiterate this point, the facilities, we can finance it within the levy limit rules because debt is really outside of it and we have some flexibility there. But the, we should always keep in mind the operational element of those new, new facilities and the challenges that that will, will come to us because of that in a levy limit environment.
Sean, because of what, of the, the fourth bullet point, which I think is really the most important, is it proper to say then, am I correct in thinking, that the decision that we would, this council would have to be discussing is whether to take those capital costs that we have for the future and instead of building something new, perhaps allocate them to things that we upkeep of, for maintenance of things that we already have? Because then they wouldn't have, we wouldn't be looking for new staff. We wouldn't be building a new building that then has operating costs. We would be repairing or upgrading something we already have. Is that a, for instance, I could use many hundreds of thousands of dollars here on the public works committee, just fixing roads we already have. I don't need to build new roads to spend this money. Is this a correct way of, is this a, is this choice valid?
Yeah, I guess I couldn't speak to whether making that decision would have no impact on the operations...
But framing the question, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I think, I think that's a fair way to approach it. The only element would be that you're probably going to have some operational challenges regardless.
But some are high and some may be medium, as you're pointing out.
So Sean, what you're saying is we can build the buildings with closing this district, but we can operate, but can we do a referendum for the operating expenses? Is that allowed or no?
Yes, you, you do have the option under the levy limits of taking to the voters a, an amount that you would like to increase the operating side of your budget. That would be an option.
So whether it's a library or public safety building, whatever, we'd have to go to, for referendum for operating expenses?
Yeah, if we're limited, there, there's two things that could happen. If we stay at, say that 2%, that's probably not going to give you much capacity. If you saw some growth, the problem, that particular operational problem could go away. But in today's environment, that doesn't seem real likely.
But Sean, when you get those figures and the council will have to decide between the 4.18 and the four, because if that's the differential rather than borrowing the money, you might want to use that particular option rather than going into debt. But that's the, the kinds of figures we have to look at, at decision time when you decide what you're going to do, i.e. new buildings, remodeling or whatever, as you suggested.
Well, Sean, we also, since we, we don't know what the future rules are going to be from Madison.
Right.
But assuming that there's some continuity. If we were to do, as Paul just mentioned, do a referendum to fund operating costs of some new structure, let's say, wouldn't we have to do that, redo that referendum at the end of that period? In other words, to sustain the operating expense, we would have to keep redoing that referendum.
You know, I'd have to check on that. Now, Catherine, if you're aware, I'm not sure how long you can have those done.
I thought as long as it is worded that it's an ongoing, again, Sean should double check on this.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's kind of if...
I think you have to say that upfront as to how you want to do, whether it's going to be an ongoing for 20 years or ongoing in perpetuity.
But first you have to decide what you're going to do with the buildings.
Right.
Modern, modernize or new? And then you decide, is it important to go 4.18 or the four?
Yeah.
And how much money is involved there?
And I want to point out something else too. This is based on assuming $5 million. And I know they spent a little bit more than that down on that element, new elementary school. So if there's a theory about building a building, I think your referendum would have to include not only operating costs, but the initial monies to build a building. So it's not just one. There isn't enough money here to go out and build a brand-new building and operate it. From what, the way I'm reading it. So it's a bigger picture than that.
We can build a nice monument and nobody's in it.
That's true too.
Build a really nice small building.
What you're saying before Jack was if you look, if we can achieve building, whatever building it is, if we just do that at four mills, the difference between that and the one, the 4.18 is your operating, potentially your operating cost that could...
Well, that's the figure you have to take into consideration rather than...
Increase our levy or...
Than going into extreme debt.
Maybe just to expand on that just a little bit, I think if you targeted the 4.18 and you, and you did do as you suggested, a referendum to increase your operating above the 8% that you'd be limited to, the decision then would be if we're going to target that 4.18, it would really then require restructuring the debt to lower the payments in the beginning and kind of expand it over a longer period of time.
That'd be the better way to go?
Well, it, it's, the city has been very aggressive on your repayment of debt. You, you guys pay your debt back faster than most. So I, I don't think you're on the edge of, of going too long with your debt right now, but it would probably require a different approach in having your debt be out over a longer period of time and paying more interest on it. The trade-off would be, is that where you want to be if we keep the mill rate at a certain level? Or would you rather increase the mill rate a little bit more and pay the debt back on a faster, faster basis?
I guess if it's possible, I could see that we, we do what we need to do here, both operating and with the buildings and still try not to increase that mill rate at all, if that's possible.
Yeah, I think, I think the next step for looking at that is, is really going to be what the cost of some of these things are. And at the same time, what do we think the, the operational element, how much is that going to have to be increased as well? I think that's probably going to be the next step.
Well, and we had many discussions originally and we're at that particular discussion with the new council and mayor. And that is basically depending on what you want to do and what we have to do, I don't want to end up with a lot of buildings that are empty. I.e. hypothetically, if the library moves out of the municipal building, what are we going to do with that particular space? Are we looking at something for the police department, i.e. another existing building that we could modernize a little bit? Or are we going to take the EMS and move them into the area that was vacated, either downstairs or at the library? And in, in one instance or another, you're going to have to pick up another building probably for the police department. Because I don't see anything that's large enough to accommodate their particular needs. But these are all scenarios that you have to look at, decide what you're going to do and that comes to the next situation on capital projects. And I'd like to see a blue ribbon committee and I'd like to see Lee be the chairman of that to start, if that's okay with, with the new mayor. But there's a lot of things that you have to put prices on and costs on.
Mr. Mayor, are you looking for a motion to close the district tonight? Are we going to do it later or talk about it tomorrow?
Well, there's two situations. You can make it now or you can wait until the new council is seated. And that's one of the reasons we had everybody there so that when they hit that, they can hit the, the street running. And wouldn't it be more appropriate for them to make that final decision than us? That's just up for discussion.
Is there a timing issue at all with that, Sean?
It's, we have to physically notify the state by May 15th. That's really the only, so I think you're...
So you do have a little time.
You've got some time, yep.
Is the decision to close the district, we don't have to, at the same point in time, make the decision of how we're going to handle the mill rate?
No, no. So we could, I'll do what you're saying. I want to make sure that the new council that's being seated is in agreement with all of us closing that TID district now.
And the thing we didn't discuss tonight is the option to leave it open means what, one more year of about $2 million? There was, there was an extra amount of money that would come back to the city if we left it open one more year?
Yeah, there's, there's a couple of schools of thought on that question. Really, what you want to be looking at is dealing with all your project costs related to the TIF. And if you really don't have any other project costs, you want to shut it, shut it down. So I think, I think we've determined that we're at the point where all the project costs related to the district are, will be paid this year. And we're going to have a surplus after that. And so I think unless the city was looking at adding some new project costs to the tax increment district, which is something you, you could do, you're probably in a situation where it's, it's required.
So there's no compelling reason to leave it open, is my point?
Correct, yeah.
Well, does the council want to close the TIF four and make that particular decision?
I think we should, but it's a matter of...
You know, if they wanted to change it back, they could. They'd still have time to do that.
I'll make the motion that, that we, we close, notify the state that we close the TID district number four.
I'll second your motion.
And I have a question for you, Sean. Can you back time for us? In this discussion between the existing council and potential new council members and, and mayor, six weeks from tonight is when people will be sworn in based on the election of April 1st. Would that, if we were to hold off any further than tonight, wouldn't that put you in kind of a jam? If we waited for six weeks from now to tell you, "Go ahead", because then you've got a short period of time between then and May 15th?
Well, the, the requirement is simply approval of a resolution and sending it to the state in terms of closing the district. We will have time to do the final accounting. We will have time to defees all the debt. And I should have mentioned that probably at the last meeting. The logistics of actually physically closing out the fund, which is really going to fall on Betty's shoulders to handle, we'll have time to do that. What, what's important to the state is they know by May 15th that you don't want to have the TIF open anymore. That's, that's really the critical date right now.
Okay, thanks.
Well, we can make a, take a vote on this particular option. But then we'll have to bring the resolution back to the, to the council probably on the 17th.
Yep.
Okay? Any discussion, any...
Does anybody see any reason to leave it open?
I'm with you, people.
I think it's a pretty straightforward decision to close it.
Yeah.
And the only reason to withhold that part of the tax base from benefiting the whole city is to make development happen that wouldn't have otherwise happened. Now, once it's paid for, then the benefit of that tax base ought to start going to the city residents. They haven't really seen the benefit of that tax base yet. And some of them feel like there are some needs in the city that maybe should be financed with the help of that tax base.
We have to weigh those.
Since those are decisions that need to be made over the course of the spring and summer and not tonight. But the decision about closing the tax increment district, I think, is pretty straightforward. I think from the time that the new council takes office on the sec, was it the third Tuesday? So it's April 15th. There'll be plenty of time and we could definitely do this still in the month of April or even early in the month, our first meeting in the month of May. I don't think that you're really against any kind of a deadline. I think one comment I had earlier in regard to the idea of combining debt with then an operating mill levy override referendum. The question, the, the language in state law when they pass these levy override referendum requirement, it's pretty well spelled out in the law. You have to say in both the raw levy amount and the percent. So in other words, just to give you a hypothetical, it would say in 2008, the levy was 5.7 million. And if you vote no, the levy this next year will be whatever, 8% more.
Yeah.
If you vote yes for additional money, then it'll be more than 8%. It would be whatever the extra is. So you're going to be asking a question, do you want an 8% increase or do you want a 12% increase? That's spelled out and required, so you don't really, the language is not something...
That specific dollar figures have to be...
Specific dollar figures, both the raw levy number in millions of dollars and the percent change. The other thing that might be of some interest or note to you is that, you know, there haven't been any of, any of those yet, but there is the first one scheduled and I think it's grand shoot. And they did something similar to this. They actually decided to, it was for their fire department. I think they hired the firemen and they don't have the building or else they built the building and they don't have the firemen. I can't remember which, but they've already done the one and now they're going to the voters in a, in a levy override referendum to get the operating money to, to kind of complete the plan. It's actually pretty similar to the discussion that was going on here. And the reason that they're the first in the state to really do it is because they sort of put themselves in a position of not being able to operate without doing it, so.
What I see on the plus side is at least we've got some monies to decide what we're going to do with over that 3.86 restriction and 2% next year. What a, what a great position we're in. And so I hope the, the new mayor and, and council appreciates that particular approach and what this council has done to bring, bring forth those, those monies.
And a note, Sean alluded to is that we have the surplus payment at the end of this year, roughly a million dollars, give or take, that we'll be able to use for whatever, roads, parks, whatever.
Okay, we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Lee?
No, I was just saying something on that.
All in favor?
Hi.
Close? Motion's carried. That's it, Sean?
Thanks, Sean.
Let's go to the second item, review the proposed capital projects and possible future bonding and debt structure issues and other issues for 2008 and 2009 consideration. And we had a little bit of that discussion. But we did put down some of the things that could happen in the coming months, years. And we certainly wanted to talk about a police department building, municipal building, if the library moves, what are we going to do with that? The lower level of City Hall, St. Cray EMS, expansion of the fire hall or satellite facility. And also we added one, which was the proposed increase in EMS funding. But let's leave that one out until later discussion. At least Betty's going to propose some approach on that upfront. Let's talk about...
So I do have information to talk about with the EMS. And I just want to make the council aware of it for the fact that we're talking about levy limits, operations, how much money is available and future expenses that will be coming forward, whether it's an operating expense of a new building, catch-up operations for the 2007, 2008 budget, those type of things. So I was just doing it more for informational purposes. And if I want to talk about the buildings first, we can go ahead and do that or I can talk about the EMS at this point. So up to the EMS?
Well, let's do that, seeing you've laid that one out.
Okay. With the EMS, the operations of that have grown significantly and his runs have been increasing over the years. I gave you a 2006 financial. I don't have the 2007 accruals done yet with depreciation and the receivables. So it'll be very similar though. In 2006, we had a $58,000 loss. This is a fund that's basically, if it runs at a loss position, will be picked up by the general fund. Those funds will be supplemented by general tax levy. So I think it's important that we have this one running in a, in a good position, raising fees and those type of things.
But will all of those losses be picked up by the city of Hudson?
At this point, the way it is structured... At this point, the way it is structured, yes.
We ought to change that a little bit.
We have an agreement with the township and the village of North Hudson and the town of Troy. They pay on a per capita basis. So at this point, they've got a set fee, and if we run at a deficit, it's up to the city to, to cover that deficit. Right now, we had sufficient funds in there to take care of, of the fifty-eight thousand dollars that was at loss. This year, it looks like another loss, probably very similar, maybe not quite as high as fifty-eight thousand.
How much?
Nah, I would say anywhere between thirty-five to fifty thousand.
So Betty, if we have a loss, the city has to take up the whole loss and the other municipalities do not?
The way it's structured at this time, yes.
Doesn't make sense.
Well, that's why we need to change the rate.
Yeah. Pretty fast.
There was also some discussion about changing how it's billed out, right? Changing it to bill on call versus bill on cap, per capita?
We've had lots of discussions, and we've had lots of discussions on, on how to tweak the numbers, how he can get coverage. One of the problems, because of all the, the runs that he does, he has a volunteer group of people, but these people are getting up six times a night and then going to their regular jobs during the day. So Eric has come up with some other proposals for full-time positions, part-time, half-time, weekend fills, those type of things. And, and we are crunching the numbers on a constant basis, trying to come up with a solution. Because personnel costs are the most expensive, one of the most expensive things, supplies are quite expensive too for them. But one of the things we have talked about is going to a full-time fire depart, or EMS, full-time twenty-four seven. If that's the case, you end up paying approximately twenty-one fifty. Every one of those districts would supplement twenty-one dollars and fifty cents per capita. Right now, we're paying ten dollars and fifty cents per capita. Quite expensive for us and quite expensive for places like North Hudson. And not able to handle it within the levy limits that we presently have. So we're looking for solutions.
Excuse me, are you projecting out two thousand and nine almost seventeen dollars and fifty cents?
Why'd I put on, on the worksheet that's in front of you, we're presently paying ten dollars and fifty cents. We used to pay seven dollars. And what we had looked at as discussions during the budget that possibly going to seventeen dollars and fifty cents in two thousand and nine.
As an op, as operating as we are right now.
Operating as we are right now with some changes in personnel, but not still full-time.
That was, I, I think the seventeen fifty, wasn't it two full-time crews, Eric?
It just depends on how we can come up with the staffing configuration and how we still, still several different types of staffing configurations to look at.
'Cause I think the one that we looked at was, right now you've got moving to, I thought it was two full-time crews, twenty-four seven was the seventeen fifty.
Yeah, the goal is that we wanna be able to get two paramedics out the door and two ambulances out the door. How we staff that with the wrangling of the trucks is still being looked at, what's gonna be the most advantageous for the community.
And at ten fifty, that's one full-time?
That, we have three full-time right now.
But it's not three full-time crews, it's three full-time people.
Not three full-time crews, it's three full-time paramedics. And then we rely on volunteers to man the ambulances to take, to meet the paramedic on scene.
And this actually increases, you ended up having, I don't remember what the number was, eight, eight full-time paramedics? I don't remember what the number was here.
We would end up with approximately six to eight full-time employees and still, and we can still utilize the volunteers as more of a backup.
Eric, in the past, Chief Frye, who's sitting in front of you, has voiced a preference to not, to, to keep the billing the way it is on his fire runs and not do a per-call as some other nearby municipalities do. Is that still your feeling too, that not to switch to a per-call billing, but keep it on, keep this at a per-capita basis?
Yeah, I believe it.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I, I think that the, the overage is the one that scares me more than going to the seventeen and a half per capita, because that kind of ambulance service is certainly worth that kind of money. But I do think that the committee, the EMS committee should certainly take a look, because on that committee is all the other government agencies that pay into this, that if there is a, a loss, that they should share in that respectively. Now, we haven't had a loss before that, and once the loss occurs, then you always say, "Well, let's change that so that, you know, the city isn't totally responsible for it." So I think that, that should be taken care of upfront.
I do have one other question on that. When we discussed moving to ten fifty, I don't remember us discussing that then we would still operate at a loss. I thought that was supposed to cover all of our expenses.
Yeah, we hoped to cover all of our expenses.
With the ten fifty, we were gonna cover that, that loss that we were operating with at this point. The seventeen fifty was to address more of a full-time.
So what we're talking about right now is now that we have increased to ten fifty, we should not be running at a loss?
I'm not sure yet, 'cause we just started. Well, we shouldn't be, in theory, it should not be, no.
Yeah.
Going to the ten fifty, the way we outlined that, we were not going to have a loss.
Yeah, correct. That's what I heard too. So I wanted to keep, make sure, you know, we have a loss now, which is going to have to go to the general fund, but the ten fifty was intended so that next year we'd not run at a loss.
But we're, we're in the march, and I don't think she really knows what that...
I understand.
I don't know if the wrangles are gonna break down, I don't know.
Because, you know, Medicare only pays so much per run, that's why we're at a loss. So population's increasing and age-wise and...
We tried to figure that out.
And that's why we raised the rate this year, per capita specifically to, to cover a lot of those things. We went through a lot of those with Eric, as far as what gets paid, what doesn't get paid. We changed some of our rates on a few things to try to...
How far, how far out is that per capita ten fifty looking into the future?
We looked at it for this year and next year, another increase.
And, and the seventeen fifty jump would be, how many more years past two thousand and nine? I guess I'm looking for the future. I'm looking long-term, not the short-term fix.
I think in long-term, we have to look at it even differently for the fact that if we're going up to the seventeen fifty, I'm not sure we're gonna keep all the participants. So therefore, then the city would have to be, or the other districts would have to be picking up those, those participants' costs or those participants' revenue that they were giving us. So it's hard to say, you know, we can look at it right now, we can put the numbers out there and see how the townships and how the village will react, but I'm not sure who's gonna stay, who's not gonna stay, who can afford to stay.
I can answer part of your question too, and we looked at run rates and at what point do, can we no longer get an ambulance out the door to answer a call? And Eric went through the, the acceleration rates, the, you know, bringing us up to ten fifty to put, to take down the debt, to put enough people on to pay for the overtime to get people out there. He then felt that come next year, we're gonna be in a position where we're again behind the curve and we're gonna have to add staff to keep up with what we're doing today. So the seven, move to the seventeen fifty or whatever that number becomes as we work on restructuring the, the crew, is to keep up with the demand.
Well, and that's what I'm, I'm getting at, is I guess I'd like to see some scenario ran for your operations to out, out some few years or the talk of privatization. Well, that's a moving target, 'cause your population is going up and your expenses are going up and Medicare is paying less. So you do have to have almost quarterly meetings to see where you are as far as the cost is concerned. And she's projecting thirty-five to fifty, but we're only in the first quarter, and I know how you're projecting that out or how you're coming up with that figure.
That was last year's.
Oh, so you don't know where we are this year?
Not yet.
Okay, good.
And also to answer your question, Randy, Eric and I have talked about that on the EMS, that we wanna, we wanna keep, no, not privatization, but keeping projections as far as asking, you know, where do we think we'll be in a year or two? You know, as, as we continue to build out the city, you're, you're, you're not adding more people, but more people are aging, so there's a lot of variability in that. But he is attempting to do some of those projections so that at each one of our meetings, we can look at where do we think we're gonna be in a year?
Randy, I mean, our call volume is skyrocketing ninety-two percent and so...
You gotta get up and talk to us. Oh, you were standing. Come on up, come, come on up here. Oh, he's gonna, he's gonna kill me tomorrow.
Yeah, the is, the main issues, the main issues is, when we started our paramedic program, we wanted to utilize our volunteers. We, we really had no idea where our call volume was gonna be. We kinda projected out where we were gonna go. Five years later, we're at ninety-two percent over call volume. So I feel like, you know, we're trying to stay currently, but then look in the future of funding. And what is the best staffing? Do we go to all full-time? Do we have the volunteers move into a backup role versus an all full-time, you know, crew? I think today, you know, now we're, you know, a few years ago, two calls was a busy day. I think today we did five or six. And, and that is a lot to ask for volunteers. And we can, you know, I'm researching different municipal-run services throughout the state that have run into similar issues. Like a per capita, yeah, a, a normal per capita that I'm finding out there on a municipal-run service is around twenty to twenty-five dollars per resident. And we're, yeah, and we're trying to get up to the point where we can maintain.
Well, let, let's not look at this report as, as gloom and doom.
Right, no, it's not a gloom and doom report.
Because we don't know where we are into this year at the projected ten and a half.
Right.
Now, if it's necessary to move up between ten and a half and seventeen and a half as we gain in population and other circumstances, that's not a bad deal when you're talking about other services that are, are charging twenty-five to thirty dollars.
Right.
I just don't wanna get the TV audience wondering whether or not they're gonna get an ambulance call or not.
Yeah, we're getting crews out the door.
It's not gloom and doom.
So Eric, can I ask a question about the less adjustments? I assume that's charge-offs or dollars that aren't collected from calls?
Yeah, that is a write-off.
Is that a pretty standard percentage, thirty-five percent between thirty and...
Yeah, the industry average is actually, we're actually below industry average.
But that's what we put into our equation for future projections.
What needs to be done to, to get the other municipalities on board here to, to help with the loss?
That, that's gonna be up to them. I mean, I can go out and, matter of fact, I'm planning on going out this next month or so to talk to each municipality, look at different options. I mean, there's always ways, if we decide to incorporate it under the city, that we still can contract with each municipality, but it's just at a different...
Are they still, are they on a year-to-year basis with this?
Yes.
So what's, what are your feeling that, that all them or some of them will drop out?
I, I don't know at this point. I, I think it's gonna depend on the levy limits and also what we're projecting, what we need to run to. I mean, we can give them a goal, but...
Yeah, but the flip, flip side of that, Eric, is they love your service.
Right.
And you're doing a great job, and I don't think anybody's gonna drop out of it, because where would they go? They'd have to go to Revol's or Stillwater, and there's quite a delay there. And all of those do not have paramedics on duty.
Right.
And what happens is, we can, we can transport a patient from here to Minneapolis to, in case of a heart attack, to a hospital, whereas some of the other surrounding areas, because they don't have paramedics, can't do that. They have to wait for LifeLink and a few of these others to come in and get them. I remember when I had my heart attack, I was laying there for anywhere from thirty minutes to forty-five minutes before somebody got to me. You'd, you'd do a lot of thinking in that particular time. And I could've been, I wanted to drive, but they wouldn't let me. I could've been in an ambulance, the service that you have, en route to St. Paul in Minneapolis to get some immediate service. So when you're talking ten and a half to seventeen per capita, that's a damn good investment.
I, I wanna make one other point. With the town of Troy and, you know, the, the other participants we're in on this discussion, and we discussed what this year looks like, and we discussed what next year looks like and the different options moving forward. At each one of our meetings going forward, we'll be looking at, you know, where are we, where are we with our run rates, what's next year gonna look like? So they will know, you know, going into their budgeting season for two thousand, whatever, the next budgeting season, they'll know what direction we're going with these options.
Well, it'd be nice to get everybody locked up longer than a year-to-year, because if we end up hiring six or eight full-time employees and all of a sudden everybody drops out, then, which is a, a bad thing.
But the way it's set up now, Paul, is you do have an EMS committee represented...
Oh, I know that.
...by each government area. They're the ones that are gonna make that particular decision. And I think they're all on board.
Well, it seems to me, and Mary would hope you would discuss this with the other municipalities or our partners in all of this, that rather than this council trying to divine the future as to what the right rate should be, if the other municipalities simply agree to apportion any loss, doesn't make any difference what the rate is.
Yeah, that's all you need.
That's just that one simple execution, and it's done.
Yep.
So please discuss that with us.
Well, and I wanna point out that, that I, I'm not sure, Betty, you're just looking at this year's loss. I mean, this, this ten fifty is intended to cover next year, so there is no loss.
It, it is at this point, yeah. But I think we were addressing the issues with the labor that we thought was going to increase the cost.
Right, okay. And then, then we also need to change the agreement, which I agree, yeah.
Yeah, we're just, we're, we're trying to plan for the future. We're not, like Jack said, we're, we're not, it's not gloom and doom. I'm very proud of our full-time paramedics and our volunteers. I think it's second to none. And I've been doing this job for twenty years.
Great job on projecting this financially.
Right, I, it's just the tremendous growth has caught us, you know, we're constantly trying to adjust, so...
Yeah, let me clarify, I don't know if you're assuming, I'm thinking doom and gloom, that's not what I'm getting at. What I'm getting at is making sure...
I didn't say you were getting at that.
Making sure we're getting, you know, before it starts affecting the quality of the service, that we're projecting out.
Right. And this is what I'm trying to do. I, I, I'm trying to head any potential catastrophic event off, so...
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Betty. I left these other on there because I think there's gonna be a lot of discussion from this day forward on the municipal building. If the library moves, what are you gonna do with that building? Hypothetically, you could sell it. Hypothetically, for instance, if the school wanted some additional space a year ago and, and the library had moved out of there, we could have utilized that. I don't think it's a big problem in utilizing that space if the library moves out, either by renting it or putting some of our own personnel in there. But it's something that, you don't wanna end up with a lot of empty buildings, and you're building new, and what are you gonna do with that space that we've evacuated?
Well, of the five items that you've included on tonight's agenda, three of them, the first three, really are dependent upon that parenthetical, "if the library moves."
Right.
So we really can't make any plans for anything else until we know what's...
No, the reason I put 'em there is that you will have to be making decisions with those in the upcoming weeks and months.
And this gets part, gonna be part of our brainstorming as far as, what if we do this, what if we do this, what do these costs look like, what are the long-term effects? I mean, putting together all those different options.
And you can put a lot of scenarios together, depending on what happens.
Yep.
Is there anything, other discussions you wanna have on each one of these subjects, or you wanna wait until meaningful?
You know, it makes, makes a lot of sense to put these scenarios in place, but the key element, I think, is our operating expenses.
Oh, absolutely.
How in the world are we gonna be able to fund those operating expenses? I think every department is gonna be coming in, we've got some extra money coming forward. Everybody will probably wanna have a piece of that. And so I think we have to set priorities.
Sure.
And not that these aren't important, but I think we need to look and, as a group, have to set a priority on which ones we wanna try to accomplish, 'cause we can't do them all, I don't believe.
But you can combine a couple of things, yeah. Betty? Now, here comes the numbers.
I didn't even give you a handout.
Good.
One of the things I'd also like the council to address tonight is maybe the timing of what we're looking at. Ellers, I will be coming forward with a contract for our capital improvement plan to have Ellers help develop our five-year plan with us. And one of the things that I'm, I'm looking for with direction with the council and, and the candidates here, that we will be issuing a bond for two thousand and eight, and we'll be doing that almost at the same time we're closing the tax increment district, which will probably, we're structuring it, so it probably will be issued in May, so I'll start work in April on this. One of the key factors in this is how are we gonna structure this debt? And that has to do with what is the thought of the council at this point with these projects? Do you think that we will be probably holding off and doing something in two thousand and nine, and therefore I should structure my debt a little bit differently so I front-load this issue, so that we don't have a, a big drop down to the three point seven? Or do you think that the possibility is that we would have plans and specs and issuing debt by the end of two thousand and eight, so that I can levy for it in two thousand and nine? And so that's where I'm kinda stalling right now. I'll be beginning that in the next month here with Sean and trying to structure the debt for this new issue and liking some direction on what the thoughts are of the council, if they think that something's going to happen in two thousand and eight, or do you think if they think that something's going to happen in 2008, or do you think that it's really going to go into the spring of 2009?
Well, if you're going to issue some debt, you have to have some specifics on what you're going to do with the money that you're putting out.
This is the 1.6 million that I'm talking about that we went through budget process with?
That part, that one's already cut and dried.
That's the one, that one is the one that we're going to be structuring though. That's the one that we've been talking about, whether should we front-load this or should we pay off some of that debt that we have, the balloon payment coming due? So, and it's key factor on what are we going to do in the fall or what are we going to do in the spring?
Betty, I'd like to give you one suggestion on the timing. As we just discussed, much of this depends on what happens with the municipal building, if the library moves or if it does not. Let us say that the library were going to move. I serve on the library board and our architects have told us that even if we were able to move, we would not have the new building done over to, to hold the weight of the books and to the specs that we need. We would not be vacating the municipal building till mid-2009 at the earliest. So you're not talking about anything in 2008 as far as these projects that we've been discussing tonight.
But Betty, we had the 1.6 million on Carmichael to resurfacing.
Yeah, that's, that's a given.
Yep.
That's already done. We've already agreed and voted on all of that.
Right, but the bonding.
But I'm going to be doing the bond for that.
Right.
Yeah, but let's proceed with that as, as we directed you to do. I don't know if anything, Scott, I think the fire hall or satellite facility stands on its own out there.
Well, that, that's for Chief Frye to talk about. We had had discussions in the past about a satellite facility and there were some concerns about the additional time to get to the trucks to then get out of the garage. Jim, do you want to address that? Do you want to talk about that now, what your feeling is about a satellite facility? Sorry to put you on the spot. What's new?
I, I think a satellite facility is necessary. The location has, has to be discussed though. It's been suggested the southeast side of the community. The difficulties with that is we have very few that live and work down there. I don't know if it'd be one of those things, build it and they will come. Or it, dealing with volunteers is a lot different than full-time staff. I mean, full-time staff, you usually put the facility where it needs to be and people are there. If we're going to continue with the volunteer staff, then we got to kind of put it where our volunteers are coming from.
Well, we got about a thousand employees in the business park. Have you made any overtures to them to look for volunteers?
And a couple of them have applied, but when, when they, we asked for the letter from their employer that will allow them to respond, their employers are reluctant to let them to respond for, you know, daytime calls is specifically, are specifically difficult to recruit for.
Well, sometimes it works better to go the other way and talk to the CEO and see if you can't get a couple of volunteers from each company rather than having it come from the lower level to the CEO.
We, we have, we hired one of our, we had a firefighter, took a job at one of the businesses in the business park, his employer said fine, took one fire call and then after that, that was it. I'm not saying it can't work, I'm just saying those are some factors we have to all discuss and consider.
I've had some discussions with Jim in the past, the alternative of having a satellite, i.e. maybe the seven and a half acres that the city owns next to the business park as a possible site so they wouldn't have to pay additional monies for the land. That's one option, which would help us considerably dollar-wise. The second approach, and we talked about this, he didn't necessarily like it in total, but if the EMS moved out of that one bay, it would give the fire department another bay, and adding another two bays towards the alley with some structure on top for an office is another option that they could do with certainly less money, I think, and we've got some estimates on that, than building a new building as a satellite. That's another option that we talked about.
Well, it has an additional advantage and that is not, this is not a firm rule, but to a great extent, the pool of volunteers is down here in the old part of Hudson.
So that's another thing you have to weigh, but that's another option we look at.
That's not necessarily true. Over half of our people are coming from Hudson Township.
Okay, because it used to be the other way around when we last talked about.
There is one other thing to consider too, when we're strapped tightly in our operational budget, running one facility and operating one facility, heating and cooling and that type of thing, when you create two facilities now, you've doubled the operational, or not doubled them, but you're a lot, you've got additional operational costs there. So it's better, it seems to be financially better to have one facility wherever it's located than having two facilities you have to operate.
And that's some of the things you have to look at.
Right, and, you know, I'm, I'm open for suggestion or discussion, it's just, there's a lot of things to consider.
Well, as Randy said, we could, this is kind of separate. We could still talk not necessarily about a satellite facility, but as part of the agenda item says, expansion of the current facility, we could still discuss that before.
It's just not tied to the municipal.
It's not tied to the municipal, you're right.
Right, yep.
That's why I said three of the five were tied to that, but this is the fourth one.
Everybody, do you alter people still want to run? Okay, that's the kinds of things that will be, that you'll be discussing in the near future. Is there any other comments that council wants to make or the people in the audience? Alter persons, mayor, whatever?
Well, I just, I just strongly encourage that, I think our number one priority is a new public safety building, police EMS, and I'd strongly encourage that the new council move forward with that fast.
Well, there are a couple of options that I've been thinking of, and there's a few buildings that are available because of, well, they seem to be all banks. We only have 22 banks in the city, but there are some options that I think the new council should look at, make sure that, that the new chief is involved with that, and the requirements for that police department meet whatever building you're looking at. I know we looked at a few buildings when Chief Smith was here, but they didn't quite meet his particular requirements, but I think we're looking at it in a new light and a new approach, and I've got some suggestions on some of the buildings that maybe you should look at. And I'd like to see some sort of blue ribbon committee put forth, and maybe you can spearhead that until the new council is seated.
I think the idea of getting all those different, all the different options and things down on paper, figure out, there's a lot of ideas floating around and we.
And we want the input from everybody.
Yeah.
You know, all the staff that's involved. Okay, is that it on those two items? Now, we're going to have a discussion and action on a possible creation of position description for the wastewater treatment utility director and establish the salary range for that position. Are we going to do that in close?
Establishing natural salary. I, in working with Jim, came up with a new position description for a new position wastewater utility director. I emailed that to you and I believe you have a hard copy of it. In addition, you asked me to establish a range based on what the current individuals and directorships, if that's what they're called, are making. So I set that between 62 and 72. That's completely up to you if you want to make modifications to that. So it'd be a couple of different things, any modifications and then improving the description and then whatever you want to set for the salary range.
So you haven't looked at his peers?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, that's where that range came from, both internal and external.
Devin, I've looked over what you've done and I'm going to make a motion with slight, just a slight change and see how the council feels about this. I'm going to move that we do create the director's position as opposed to a superintendency for this department and that the salary range go from 64,000 to 72,000.
For a second?
I'll second.
Discussion or comments?
Scott, can I ask why the change?
Yeah, I think that the 62,000 would quickly get lost in the dust and we're looking at something that's going to stay, stay around for a while. So I think that that is, that quickly would be seen as too low in, in, in the almost immediate future.
And that's in line with the, with his peers and the other directors?
Right, that's exactly the case.
And the comparison of what we're giving him in comparison to some of the surrounding areas, we're still pretty low.
This range, is it the similar range that other cities are using?
The two comparable, comparable that it gave us fall within this range as do all the directors of the city. So range covers both externally and internally.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay, now we're going to go into closed session pursuant to 19851(c) Wisconsin stats to discuss the 2008 compensation for the wastewater treatment utility director and employment contract for the chief of police. Need a motion to go in, I just, I'm waiting until they clear out, okay?
A second.
Roll call vote.
Horsett?
Yes.
Rodmacher?
Yes.
Wiley?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Urchell?
Yes.